Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special council meeting of twenty fourteen, twenty twenty four as well as order. Anyone attending the meeting needs can play headphones, please raise their hands. We'll break this to you. Um, just a reminder, tonight is a special meeting and there will be no public comment. And uh, let's write them. Pledge of allegiance to the law, we unite as we defend America, in the true republic for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Donna, do a roll call, please.
I will. Councilmember Blush.
Sure.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
And Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
All right. City manager, Martin Clark, has details for us about interview process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, tonight, the council interview each candidate, uh, one at a time for a maximum thirty minutes. Um, they'll be followed by what could be some informal, uh, time that the county that they candidate could, um, add any other information that they may, uh, deem fit. So, um, the interviewer order will be determined by a random draw. Got the names up here in a jar. Uh, the council will ask predetermined questions to each candidate. Um, we won't deviate from that. Those will rotate through the council that are on your, on your list. Um, following the interviews, the council will convene into an executive session for fifteen minutes, but with no decisions to be made, just to discuss the qualifications of the candidates. Um, after the executive session, we'll reconvene the meeting. Mayor will ask for nominations from the council. Uh, candidates to be considered. Uh, no second is needed for those nominations. Um, the nomination period is closed by motion, a second majority vote of the council at that point. Uh, council members may deliberate, uh, on matters such as criteria for selection and a nominated group of candidates at that time as well. Uh, after the, whatever type of deliberation takes place, uh, the mayor will ask, um, the mayor will pull the council members to determine whether you're ready to take a vote. At that point, city clerk will do a roll call vote. And the first, uh, candidate that research receives a majority vote, which is four in this case, um, would be the candidate selected and, uh, we have planned for swearing in on the twenty first of, hey, March, May, May, aren't we? Next, next week. Um, in fairness of all the candidates, we're gonna ask the candidates, um, meet outside and wait outside during the interviews. Um, so, uh, the particular candidate can ask questions that are, that's in the room and those don't hear those, uh, hear the questions at the same time. So, um, Public Works Director Jay Harris is going to, uh, help those individuals out outside and make sure that, uh, they're kept company out there. So, Mr. Mayor, it's up to you at this point.
All right. You want to lock draw?
Yeah. You have to pick it.
I'll number it. This is number one. It's me, Anderson.
Right, of course.
You're first. Welcome.
Kathleen McCall.
Kathleen McCall is number two. Lindsay Saff does number three. Well, that should maybe David Herick, number four.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, you'll take all, uh, our other candidates out to the main room. If there's a set of questions in front of you there, you can refer to, um, at the end of the interview, if you'll please leave them on the table for the candidates. Thank you.
That's my first. Hi, Tiffany. Uh, first question, Harry, was what steps have you taken to prepare yourself in this position of select?
I haven't taken any specific steps, um, for this position. This really was something that I happened to notice in a paper two weeks ago, and I thought, you know what? It's now or never. It's now or never that I do it. Um, however, I have familiarized myself a little bit with past meetings and of course, being a member of the community. I know, in my opinion, what I would like to see happen, what I would like to see for the future. And so I think the next step is to take that in action and just go with it and just run with what I feel would be best and those ideas to put those ideas into place. All right.
All right, here we go. What are the three highest priorities or issues you believe the council needs to address in the short term, which is one to three years? And the long term, three to five years? How would you propose to address these, like transportation, water supply, human services, water quality, fiscal management, parks, open spaces, et cetera? We can break this down if you'd like.
Oh, yeah, that was a lot.
Yeah, I know. I know. It's a big question here. So let's go with the first part. What are the three highest priorities or issues you believe the council needs to address in the short term and the long term? We'll start there.
I think one of the biggest issues over the last, I would say, six months I've seen is probably the parks, um, with that being the transient or the homeless there all the time, the drug usage. The items we're finding, the paraphernalia we're finding in the parks, the graffiti that's coming up in the parks, um. I think we have so many younger kids in the community that that's one of, and that's one of the only things we have for them right now. Um, to keep them company or to keep them busy, I should say. That's not video games or TV or something like that. That's, we're so limited on what we have available for them to do. And I think the biggest thing we need to do is keep it safe and keep it clean for them and keep it available at all times for them without having any worry. And so just having been there and going to the parts and seeing what I see here and what I hear, I think that's probably one of the biggest things right now. Um, is making sure it continues to stay clean, making sure we're on top of that, having some sort of process in place where it's consistently that way, not just every other day or during, you know, business hours that it stays clean. It's all the time and always safe for them regardless of the time that they are there.
Okay, so that falls into how would you propose to address these?
I think the first thing I would do is probably, and I know we do have, I believe it's the city who does go in and clean up and clean the bathrooms, do something like that. Um, maybe doing an extra curricular for the school kids, either uh, middle school, high school, to have something where they can earn some sort of credit to go down there and clean it up and make it something that we can involve the rest of the community in. Or, gosh, I'm more than happy to do it. I'm more than happy to do that. I don't mind. Um, but maybe doing a volunteer day or something like that where we can do that consistently, weekly, every other week to make sure it continues to stay that way. Okay, thank you.
Are there any regional issues or forums in which you had a particular interest or expertise? For example, economic development, annexation, or housing?
I think right now it's probably in a nationwide interest of the economic development and housing because everything is going up, but nothing's remaining the same or we're not doing anything or we're not able to do anything to keep things affordable. So everything's going up, but at the same time, nothing's changing. So my biggest though is housing. My biggest thing is housing and that would be a huge interest of mine because um, I see it all the time. There are so many, especially in our communities, so many low income or fixed income households that they are having a hard time affording their normal house, you know, their normal rent, their normal mortgage. Um, and that, I, I wouldn't even consider that an interest, more of a passion on trying to figure out something to do because I've also been personally hit with, not myself, but people that I've known where they've had to move from a home to an apartment because they can no longer afford it because life, because of life. So seeing that it's very heartbreaking. Seeing the housing affordability around here, it's, it's very hard.
Right. So, how are you doing?
I'm doing okay. How are you?
Balancing competing community needs is challenging. How do you prioritize your efforts to weigh facts, decision process?
I think those change all the time. Because at any given moment, you could have a factor that changes the importance of something from first place to second place, just depending on situations. Um, but I would take a look at what needed to be done. And I think I, I use this in every aspect of my life, um, every decision I have to do. What is the most important to me at this moment or what is the important that needs to be done at this moment? And then I figure out, okay, these are the steps I need to accomplish that. What's the next one? I tend to make a list and going through that list, checking off those boxes and doing that and not getting sidetracked because I'm very good for that at times. Um, making sure that I'm just checking out those boxes and doing in what my heart feels to be the most important. So what's gonna make the most impact? Let's start, let's start there. Let's do that one. What's gonna make the second highest impact? Let's go to that one. So just depending on the, the topics, the subjects, the things that needed to done is where I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would start.
Thank you.
Hey, Tiffany. Homelessness and affordable housing are polarizing topics. How would you approach this issue as a council member? What happens if the situation doesn't get better or worsens?
Both are very big issues in our community. Um, but it's so very hard to say what I would do without knowing all of the factors. What have you guys already done? What is within our means? What can we do? What can we not do? Um, I think with that, I, I, I can't answer that question straight, straight out because I don't know, um, what you guys have already tried doing. What we're able to do, what is allowed to be done, what our limits are. I don't know many of that. So without knowing that, I, I didn't, I can't give you a straight answer. Um, but I do know I would take into, I would take everything into consideration and go from there. Just because my opinion is what it is may not be somebody else's. And so if things were to get better, wonderful, that's, that's what our goal is. If they were to worsen, then you know what? We move on to something different and try a different approach to it and see what happens next time.
Thank you. Not yet the last precept question. Impending development is inevitable, residential and commercial. What do you believe are the most significant challenges and opportunities to grow?
I think some of the most significant challenges to grow are feasibility. Time. Um, if we are only given so much and support, support is a huge one. If we're not backed by, and it's not just as a city, but you know, within ourselves, if we're not, we, if we don't have that support, we can't grow. We can't grow. And so I think that would probably be the, the biggest significant challenge is support and also of course funds. If you don't have the funds to do what you want to do, then that's gonna be a huge challenge right there. The biggest, the most the biggest opportunity, I think, when it comes to growth is seeing how everything's going. You, you have this idea in your head on what something should look like and being in, having a platform to do so, like city council or, or higher, you have that platform to have those opportunities to make a difference, to see something happen. And I think being able to just have an opportunity to do something is huge. And I think that's, as a council, you have the opportunity to see that. You have the voice to do that. And I think that's, it's special. It's very special.
Donna, what's your time?
It's been ten minutes.
Okay, Councilwoman Jordan, you wanted to question that?
Sure. What strengths do you believe are your greatest asset to the council?
I'm stubborn. I don't, I don't let down easy. I do not let down easy and I'm very opinionated. I'm very opinionated. So, I mean, you can take, you can look at that as a, a strength or a weakness. I look at it as a strength because I am very opinionated and I don't back down. When I have passion for something, you're gonna know it. You are going to know it and I'm gonna make it be, I'm gonna make it very clear.
Okay, explain your current and past community involvement with the city, nonprofit, task force, committees, or other groups? And how has this involvement contributed to the community?
So, that is, that is very limited. Um, I I haven't had much involvement for one reason or another that I I'm a single mom, nineteen years. I, I don't have time to do that. Um, now that my son is grown, I'm ready to do all of the things that I, I can do now. As of January, September of twenty twenty-two is when I started with my current employer. And we do work with the nonprofits. We are working with, um, the youth connection. We also work with Kehodi Village and also with the right here, the housing, um, to do warm hearts. So we also raise money and collect donations for the women's shelter. And so my volunteer work or any involvement has been extremely limited up until the last year and a half. But since then, I have been a huge advocate for the women's shelter and the connection center as well as Kehodi Village, all, all for one reason or another, but all are extremely important to me. Thank you.
Discuss the most difficult group you've had to gain cooperation from and describe how you have handled that up there.
The most difficult group that I've had a game cooperation from?
Describe how you get in.
When I, the only group that I have had to gain cooperation from and the most difficult I would have to say are, remember, boys. And no, that does not include any real, it was a sports team for my son and, you know, seven, eight-year-old boys, they don't like to listen. They don't like to listen. They like to do their own thing. And so that was, we're playing a sport here. Yes, I understand it's supposed to be fun. But you know, we, there's still, there's still things that we need to accomplish while we're doing this. But I would have to say that's probably one of the biggest and most difficult things I've ever had to do when I helped coach one of his teams. And gaining cooperation from them in any way, shape, or form was extremely difficult. However, when you make something difficult or when you just have to make it a fun thing, that's what I had to do. That's what I had to do. I had to make it fun and exciting and they were, at that point, you make something fun and exciting, throw a few superhero terms in there, then you're good. So.
What kind of decisions are the most difficult for you to make?
I generally don't have a difficult time making decisions. I'm, I make decisions very easily. I hear every side of the story regardless of what the, the decision is. And I just go, my decision is my decision. It's, it's not based on the opinion of one person or another. It's my decision. It's my opinion and you don't like it. That's okay. That's okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you want to continue the next two questions to take the time? I want to make sure.
What would we have left?
Well, for the next candidates, I think that's what we have to consider is if we get through, um, the next candidates, maybe we, um, stop at ten just to be consistent, not knowing how, how long the answers will be for the next candidates, um, offer Tiffany an opportunity to add anything that she may have missed or speak about anything else that, uh, she thinks might be of interest to the council this time. If that works for you, just suggestion.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to what's been covered or you got any further?
The only thing I would like to add is, yes, I completely understand my qualifications may not be the best or the most, I may not be the most experienced in any way, but I am so passionate about this community and now that I have the time on my hands to do so, I'm very excited to see what I could, what I have the ability to do, what I can, I, what I can do for this community. I've lived here for twenty-four years. It is, I can never see myself moving and I'm so passionate about it. I love this town so much. And I just know that given the opportunity, I think I could help do amazing things. I really do. I'm very passionate about. I wouldn't apply it otherwise. I would not be here if I really didn't think I could make a difference. Um, and also no matter what, even, again, even though I do not have the qualifications of somebody else or the next person, I have never failed something that I've set my mind to. I bet on myself every single time and I will always do that. So I just wanted to let you guys know, my heart's there, my, my energy is there, my everything is there. And I never failed anything that I put my money to. Yep, of course.
Correct. We're gonna say do.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Of course, thank you.
That's right, I know. Just wanted to get out of this chair for a second.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Ready?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm ready.
All right, number one.
All right, Kathy. First question. What steps have you taken to prepare yourself for this position of select?
Well, eight years on the council, I would think that would be my answer on that one. Two on the commission and the rest on the council.
Great. How much? What are the three highest priorities or issues you believe the council needs to address in the short term, one to three years? Long term, three to five years? And how do you propose to address these, like transportation, water supply, human services, water quality, fiscal management, parks, open spaces?
Um, well, the, I feel the highest, the very highest priority right now is getting our water, get, getting our water taken care of, um, getting more storage for that so that we can bring more housing in and more housing produces more revenue in the city. Um, let's see. I, I think that short term and long term, short term, probably more short term for water. And it could go into long term, but get it going. Um, transportation, water supply, human services, transportation, um, I think we do pretty well with our transportation. Very. Are we talking about transmit Mason County Transit, that transportation? Uh, water supply, I just addressed that. Human services, um, that's a long term, I feel. Water quality is a long term. Fiscal management is long term. Parks is long term and open space is long term. That's.
Thank you, Kathy.
Are there any regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise? Example, economic development, animation, or housing?
Um, I think housing. I'm not sure if I call it an expertise, but I'm very interested in the housing aspects of, uh, the city getting our housing in order and getting houses for all, whether they're affordable or not affordable, hopefully affordable, but housing for all.
Right. Balancing competing community needs is challenging. How do you prioritize your efforts to weigh facts, decision process?
Just a minute, let me read that. Um, I suppose you're talking about community needs, um, would be housing. It would be a community need, how we would, uh, balance that. I, I would put that on the top of the list and would, uh, take, take it and make some progress with that.
Homelessness and affordable housing are polarizing topics. How would you approach this issue as a council member? What happens if the situation doesn't get better or worsens?
Wow. Well, homelessness is a big issue. Um, and I, I believe that if we did get some affordable housing, we could real affordable housing, we could get uh, the homeless taken care of. But for instance, I had a project today and, um, we had a group come, I had a group come into my, my home, into my yard and do some work. And they're basically on the, if they didn't have the place to live that they're living is in a group, they would be homeless. So they are, they have these people, uh, do work and in turn they get their housing provided for them and, um, well, it's either gotta get better or it has to get worse, one or the other. And it's gonna be terrible if it gets, does not get better. The homeless in the housing, portable housing. Um, I'm not sure it, it runs a full circle, how the city, how we get our money to take care of our city issues. So.
Impending development is inevitable, both residential and commercial. What do you believe are the most significant challenges and opportunities to grow?
Um, it is inevitable. Development is inevitable. Uh, we want to do it right. We want it productive for all, uh, for the businessmen that come in and wanna open new business, wants to build affordable housing. Um, what do you believe are the significant challenges and opportunities to grow? I believe that making it affordable for our builders to come in and, uh, build and make housing affordable. And I think that is the opportunity to growth is to make it affordable for the builders and the businessmen to come in. For the builders and the businessmen to come in.
What strengths do you believe would be your greatest asset to the council?
Well, I'm, I'm, I get out there and I um. I get, I mix with the people and I listen to what they have to say and their um. Problems they have, their positive, their negative. And try to develop a plan to make it work for everybody.
Explain your current and past community involvement with the city nonprofits, task forces, committees and other such groups? And how has this involvement contributed to the community?
Well. I'm I'm involved in the community a lot, um, I'm have been on the Lions Club since twenty seventeen. We uh paired with the city and got our basketball court done at the end of the parking lot and I see people. Young and old playing on that court a lot. Um, and they're nonprofit, um. I believe that everything we do, everything we're involved with, it has to do with. Producing something positive for the community, it's a very important thing to do. And that's where we. I always say the volunteer and the community workers is what makes the world go around. And if we did not. If we did not depend on the um. Nonprofits. To um, get stuff done, talk about Rotary, Kiwanis, Lion Club. Um, the, the companies that uh take care of the homeless and the need, the people in need, very important. So um. That's. My involvement, my idea of involvement.
Can you discuss the most difficult group you have had to gain cooperation from and describe?
I don't think I've ran into a difficult group. I think that when you, if you run into a difficult group, that's where you need to sit down with some ideas and. Um, some plans to make things go smoother, but I can't remember when I've. Well, I do. Back, a while back, but um, I won't go into that right now. But I believe when you can compromise and discuss the problem.
What kind of decisions are most difficult for you to make?
To say no. That's what I have, I have a hard time saying no, sometimes um. I'll say yes to. A project or a group of people and find out that it wasn't the best. The best thing. So I have a hard time saying no.
Right, uh, is there anything else you'd like to add that we've covered or closing comments?
No, I think so. Yeah, you're welcome.
Oh, you're gonna spread it around, nice of you. Except for you three, I'm just saying.
We're gonna start talking to Councilmember Blush.
Alright, what steps have you taken to prepare yourself for this position if select?
Um, I actually contacted Jayden Evans after she spoke last week because I heard that they have some housing needs and. I know of a property manager in town that has some very affordable units and some will be coming available soon. So I reached out to her to see if she had contacted that property manager and she said she hadn't. So I reached out to the property manager myself to see if there was anything that could work out to uh make housing available to these. People, we survivors who need housing, um, I actually also attended a. Uh, Chamber of Commerce meeting yesterday online virtually to hear the. State five year plan for housing homelessness. So I didn't see anybody here at that meeting, but I did learn a lot of information for the, from the Chamber of Commerce and. Also from other council members from other. Communities and her people from Yakima, people from um, let's see. There was people from King County, there was people from all over the state, there were several people that were there and um, I had a lot of good insights. About housing, so. I prepared by trying to learn about housing and how I can help solve these issues.
Alright. What are the three highest priorities or issues you believe the council needs to address in the short term? That's one to three years, the long term, three to five years? And how would you uh propose to address these?
Um, obviously, housing is the major issue that I keep hearing every week from people, so. I recently went into school for real estate, so I know a little bit about real estate now. Um, so I want to see that improved, I want to do what I can to make connections and maybe reach out to Habitat Humanities, see if there's anything we can do to. Uh, increase housing here, um, just maybe some small units for people. I also want to see some, maybe some better dental care available for people in this community. Um, I I'm not really seeing a lot of dental care available for people in the lower income, so I want to try to. Bridge the gap and make that possible, I would probably reach out to neighbor care and see if I could. Uh, see if I could get some clinic out here maybe once a week or twice a week. Um, and I I. Think public safety is something that you guys have done a lot to improve. And there's still a little bit more to do, so I think that would be probably my three main priorities. Thank you.
Are there any regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise? For example, if you're on the development, annexation or housing?
Well, as I mentioned, I went to school for real estate, I'm I'm not quite licensed, I'm right up there, uh, ready to get licensed. Um, but my actual expertise is dealing with people with disabilities, I. Work with the Lupus Foundation of America and do a lot of advocacy work for them. Um, I petition uh members of Congress and Washington DC for better healthcare and lupus. Funding for research so that we can have better treatments for people with disabilities.
Balancing competing community needs is challenging, how do you prioritize your efforts in ways fact to the decision making process?
Prioritizing and planning is kind of a special skill that I have as a mother of five, it's kind of just necessary that I prioritize the most important things. Um, I just. I actually currently do not have other employment, I put all of my effort into uh mothering and uh. homeschooling my children, so I'm actually pretty available for anything that you guys need to do right now because my kids have grown, they're pretty much ready to. Go forward on their own now and they're not needing me as much, so I'm very, very available. For anything that you guys need me to, to do, if you need me in housing, if you need me anywhere else, I'm I'm very available, so. I can always prioritize anything that you guys have listed for me, I prioritize that first. Thank you.
Homelessness and affordable housing are polarizing topics, how would you approach this issue as council member? What happens if the situation doesn't get better or worse?
Well. You know, honestly, what I've noticed is that this is probably a systemic problem across the country, it seems to be everywhere, it's not just here. It seems to be all across the state, all across the country, so I mean, it it's going to be difficult to make it. Instantly better in one location, but I'm willing to do absolutely everything I can. As I mentioned, I'm willing to reach out to Habitat Humanity and see if we can get some charity projects going, I see that there's a couple of houses being built over on Park. By Habitat, looks like it's coming up really quickly and I'd like to see if we could have some more of these community projects to see where we can get some more housing. Um, I I'd also like to see. Discuss, have some discussions about what you envision for low income housing out here, if you want apartments or complexes or if you want. Just maybe smaller, more affordable starter homes, something like that, but I definitely want to do anything that I can, I'm. I'm prepared for whatever.
Impending development is inevitable, both residential and commercial. What do you believe are the most significant challenges and opportunities to grow?
That's a difficult question. Um, would you mind repeating that for just, just in the?
Impending development is inevitable, both residential and commercial. What do you believe are the most significant challenges and opportunities to grow?
I think the challenge is clearly money. Um, and workers, we we have a lack of workers across the state, so uh, that's the biggest challenge. I would say, and did you ask the benefits?
Yes.
Well, obviously, we want to see housing and we want to see businesses thrive, and the more businesses that thrive, the more money that comes in for the state, the more money for the state, more money for programs. Everybody's doing well, so we we do want to see people housed, we want to see businesses opening and thriving, so. The benefit is everybody goes up, everybody does better.
What strengths do you believe would be your greatest asset to the council?
I like to stand up for and represent people who don't necessarily have a voice. Um, people with disabilities who are fighting their own fight and they can't speak publicly. Uh, because I have had disability and I've been able to get myself into remission, I'm doing much better. I I feel a responsibility to stand up for people that do not have the ability to speak for themselves. So I think I would represent a lot of people with disabilities in this community.
Alright, explain your current and past community involvement with the city nonprofits, task forces. Committees or other such groups and how has this involvement contributed to the community?
Um, most of my work has actually been uh on a federal level, like I said, with the Lupus Foundation of America. Um, locally, I mostly get my kids involved in the library uh activities, the youth connection. And also the local YMCA, the children were team leaders for a couple of years out there, so. Um, most of my local involvement is is what I get my kids involved in out here.
Right.
Can you discuss the most difficult group that you have had to gain cooperation from and describe how you handle that?
I don't really. Know that there's a difficult room that I can't deal with, uh, I have friends that are on both sides of the political spectrum, I'm. Very open to hearing everybody's ideas and thoughts and I'm very open to trying to compromise. So I don't really. foresee a group of people that I can't handle.
Alright, final question, what kind of decisions are the most difficult for you to make?
If I'm forced to choose between my family and something else. Anything else I can prioritize, but my family is the most important thing in my life, so. Somebody asks me to do something that goes against the. Needs of my family, that's, that's the most difficult decision because my children need my support, so.
Alright, is there anything else you'd like to add that wasn't covered or do you have a closing statement or comment?
I I don't believe so, I just wanted to let you know that I did participate in several volunteer activities. When I moved, I volunteered at the Food Bank in Thurston County, I volunteered at Madigan Army Medical Center, I was a Red Cross volunteer for three months. Um, I've also done, like I said, Lupus Foundation of America work and I've done fundraising for the Lupus Research Alliance. And I also have done, I participated in a candidate forum when I was in high school, I hosted a candidate forum. And we were able to have several candidates that were running for office in the year two thousand come and speak before our school, I was able to host that. And. I think that's about it, thank you very much.
We're gonna start questions from Councilmember Blush.
Alright.
The first number one, what steps have you taken to prepare yourself for this position if select?
I've started reading, I uh, the um. Stuff on your website, you've got a whole lot of. Things about your policies and uh. There's quite a number of documents, I've made a little bit of headway on it. But I haven't been planning to do this for like a whole lot of time. Being up to it, so I have some catching up to do. But I'm aware of what's there, I'm willing to use sources on. I want to be well prepared uh.
Alright. What are the three highest priorities or issues you believe the council needs to address in the short term, one to three years, the long term, three to five years? And how would you propose to address these?
What a great question that is.
Ready?
I, I wanna, I I really love that question, um. Although it's a difficult thing to answer, I love that, um. I think that. Uh, Shelton uh. Is going to be growing no matter what we do. Uh, but how it grows and being smart about how it grows is really important. For. Uh, both the traffic and keeping that. Smooth for jobs. If we have more jobs here and people aren't just a veteran community, completely, like any jobs that that we can create here. Are going to be wonderful for the entire community. We have. A population that is uh. Older than surrounding communities and. And that's okay, but it might be nice to have more of a young, family friendly community, um. So. In the, in the short term. We have developments that are happening right now already, right, we've got uh. Uh, on both ends of town, there's, there's new developments coming. So we need to. And then they're coming, that's what we're talking about utilities over the next few years. Uh. But then uh, further out, we're looking at how are things going to build out and what's that going to look like? Does that kind of answer the question, I'd like to see, by the way, uh. Not necessarily a. Like a Silverdale direction where we become a mall farm. Uh, which could happen. But uh. If, as we grow, I'd like to see um. Some beauty. Occurring as well and and um. Uh, Shelton kind of has a track record for. Not seeming to care about beauty with the school killing the arts here just now and. With demolition of historic buildings that have happened fast, so. We just need to have a carrot moving forward in the future. So, is that answer your question?
Are there any regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise? For example, we cannot make development and extension of housing?
I think. I think Shelton's gonna be growing, again, like I said earlier, um. In a lot of ways, but I think that uh. More housing would be. An important thing to see happen, uh. Uh, the growth, the jobs that grow here. Are going to help. Uh, having, we have one of the highest commuting mile per capita. In the state. Here in Shelton. And that's. That's keeping a lot of uh car repair places in business and that's funny. But there's other things that people could be doing than spending all their time uh looking at their steering wheels. Because that's, that's mom and dad not doing Little League, that's, you know, you're driving to some, some job somewhere and you're. Then you're not involved in other things and uh, that takes away from the arts, that takes away. Family time, that. Takes away from a lot of other things that help build a community. So I think we just have to be thinking about being smart as we grow. Just thinking about consequences. If we're only a veteran community, uh, how far away are the people that, that are living here and driving? And if that is how it's gonna go, how do we prepare for that and, and, uh, deal with those impacts? But we do have to accept what is and not just wish for what is.
All right. Balancing competing community needs is challenging. How do you prioritize your efforts in way facts of the decision-making process?
Sir, question?
Yep. Balancing community needs is challenging. How do you prioritize your efforts in way facts of decision-making process?
Uh, and, and like you're just talking about the process of, of making decisions, how to weigh balance.
And we got needs. And so how would you balance those needs in your decision-making?
I think it's important to take the time to review everything, think everything through and look short, medium, and long term for each and every decision. Uh, consult, collaborate, listen, uh, get input. And before you pull the trigger on something, uh, that could be kind of impulsive, uh, look again. There's always gonna be one more thing that you haven't thought about. And you just have to figure out what is that one more thing. Uh, process is important. And it's, it's, uh, it's probably better to sometimes wait on a decision than to jump in immediately. Uh, if there's something that you, you don't want to have to be undoing something that you've already done. Sometimes once you've gone in a direction, you can't go back. So you should think ahead.
Homelessness and affordable housing are polarizing topics. How would you approach this as a council member? What happens if the situation doesn't get better or worsens?
That's a really, really tough, tough problem that, uh, you know, you build anything new, property values are high right now. Uh, you build anything new is expensive. It, what are we gonna do? I think, I do think that tiny houses are, uh, a, a whole frontier that more could be done with. When you're talking about one lot, maybe being able to support more individual, um, homes in it. I think about, uh, some of the designs, some of the homes that were built, uh, post-war, for example, like right after World War Two, that were smaller homes that were built, but were pretty efficient and pretty affordable. Um, just something, uh, reasonable enough that somebody can get started. And, uh, I mean, there's people that are, that are living in RVs and are just happy to have somewhere to be and somewhere to live. And you can do a little better than that, I think, maybe with tiny ones. And I think some of the, uh, uh, some of the technology and techniques for those things are improving. Uh, but the zoning has to be there to allow that to happen. Uh, and we have to not be afraid of people having affordable houses and being able, being able to get in those situations. It's better to have a cheap house than no house at all.
Impending development is inevitable, both residential and commercial. What do you believe are the most significant challenges and opportunities in growth?
I think that we're gonna be seeing, uh, when the Belt Road bypass happens, we'll be seeing more total traffic coming, uh, through here, both on Highway one oh one and Highway three. And we are also, uh, at the gateway to the, uh, uh, Olympic Peninsula and, uh, both, both on an industrial point of view. And, uh, and for residential and for tours. We're in a really good position. And you just look at a map and you look at Shelton on a map. We've got so much potential here for, uh, opportunity and growth. Uh, and it's just a matter of what are we gonna do with that opportunity? There's a lot of, uh, wonderful natural resources all around. As we've got twenty-six freshwater lakes in Mason County. Uh, Shelton is the only incorporated city in this county. Uh, we've got incredible potential. Uh, what will that look like? That's gonna depend on the opportunities, uh, that we decide on, one at a time, as they present themselves to us, uh, on this council.
What strengths do you believe would be your greatest asset to the council?
Probably listening is up there. I try to uh, make a point of understanding what I'm, um, what's in front of me and working through it and talking with people and deciding. I, I try to not have a predetermined uh, decision before I have a chance to think it through, talk about it and listen. There's always, uh, really one of them two points that you, you know, there's, there's the two and then there's the one that you're not even thinking about. So, yeah, I think, I think listening.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Explain your current and past community involvement with the city, nonprofits, task forces, committees, and other such groups? And how has this involvement contributed to the community?
Okay, what kinds of things have I done? Um, I work for the paper, as some of you know. Um, I've been with the Shelton Mason County Bureau since nineteen ninety-two. Um, I do some other things. I, I play the cello. Um, I've taught privately. I've, uh, I've done some volunteer work for the Mason County Senior Activities Center. Um, this year I'm on, uh, I, I just thought it would be fun to get involved with the, uh, uh, connections to theaters. So, um, any of you who haven't made it to the, uh, Something Rotten, to the play, uh, I invite you to come and do that this coming weekend. We have a little weekend of that coming around. That's just something for fun. There's more I could be doing. There's probably some other things that I've done that I don't need to remember. But, uh, yeah, I, I could probably have, but I'm not retired. You know, if I had, if I were retired, I'd, I'd have a lot of time to do. But I spend, um, I spend some time doing this.
All right.
Can you discuss the most difficult group you have to gain cooperation from and describe how you handle that?
Yeah. Uh, I don't know. If any of you remember when a Dodge came into the area and wanted to, um, have an incinerator be part of this community, uh, the potential disruption and destruction that that would have represented, um, were unacceptable. And they were presented as being, uh, this wonderful thing, uh, by kind of a, uh, a forward, uh, kind of, uh, reception, you know, PR people. And I was among the group that I got to see both ends of, of that entire, I was, I had a front row seat for all of that uh, situation. And I saw this community drive a Dodge back and I'm proud that this community drove a Dodge back. We would have unbreathable air right now if that incinerator were here. We would have roads with fifty drunk, dump trucks an hour going up and down, ruining roads if a Dodge were here. Uh, we would have stripped out forests, uh, if a Dodge were here. It, it would have been terrible. And all of that energy that we're gonna generate, it's all going to California. And it was gonna generate long-term about five jobs. So I'm happy that that's not the case.
What kind of decisions are most difficult for you to make?
All. It, it's hard to decide anything. Uh, yeah. If, the easy decisions that you think are right, uh, uh, like low hanging fruit, easy. There's almost always something that you don't know about. Uh, it, it might appear obvious, but sometimes there's something else. So, no, I don't take any decision lightly. You have to consider things. Uh, sometimes it takes a little while, but that's, it's worth it.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you'd like to add that was not covered, or you have closing, or closing statement or comments?
Oh, I don't know. Uh, the reason I'm here is I just thought it might be some, a good thing to do, something I could do for the community. And, um, yeah, I'm a cancer survivor. I, I'm very happy to be alive. This is one of those bucket list things. I thought someday I might get involved in government in some way, shape, or form. You know what? Someday is here. Here we are. And, um, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having, having.
Do you want to invite everybody back in and form the session?
Um, I guess not necessarily inside. Oh, to, to adjourn before we adjourn. Follow the process. Yeah. Okay. The audio going to pick up, Anna, or? YouTube. I mean, if, if we're, if we're executive individuals in here, no. Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the audio still isn't picking up. Somebody wanted to have a personal conversation at any time. Yeah.
Welcome back, everybody. We got, we're getting back in full volume of the meeting. We are now moving into an executive session, subject qualification of an applicant for the Senate Selective Office. The session will last fifteen minutes. We will reconvene at, um, seven eighteen, probably seven nineteen. Welcome back, everybody, and thank you, everybody who participated in this, in applying to this position. And are we, am I, what is that? Am I, I'm opening this up? Okay. Councilmembers, the floor is open to nominations. No second is needed. We have a motion to, oh, sorry, we're recording that, aren't we?
Yeah. So now we need.
Open for nominations.
Okay. Is there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Lindsay Sapp.
I'd like to nominate David Perton.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Tiffany Anderson.
Okay. Right, uh.
So now you need a motion and a second for nominations if you're finished.
Do we have a motion to second the pro nomination?
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for nominations. All clear? Say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Okay, we have three nominations. Correct. The first candidate receives four votes is appointed. If no single candidate receives four votes first, in the first round, the process will be repeated until the candidate receives a required number of votes. City clerk, Nolt, will begin the roll call.
Okay. So we will start with Councilmember Gilmore. Place your vote.
On the hot seat, um, I'm gonna vote on Lindsay Sapp.
Yep. Councilmember Sterns.
Tiffany Anderson.
Yep. Mary Nesca.
Lindsay Sapp.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Mrs. Kirk.
Yep. Lindsay Sapp. Councilmember Blush.
Lindsay Sapp.
Miss four votes.
Congratulations, Lindsay. All right. It is seven twenty-one. This meeting is adjourned.